Okay, we're gonna get started. Thank you for joining us for the City of Oklahoma City's teleconference city council meeting. We have a few announcements to make. If the teleconference is disconnected at any time during the meeting, the meeting shall be stopped and reconvened once the audio connection is restored. If communications are unable to be restored within thirty minutes, items remaining for consideration will be continued till later today, June first at one o'clock PM. Via teleconference unless we have the opportunity to stay at a different time. The agenda and documents are located on OKC.gov. Anyone wishing to speak about an agenda item, public hearing, or to speak under citizens to be heard, please call four zero five two nine seven two three nine one. Or text four zero five two one nine seven nine eight seven, or email city clerk at OKC.gov. Speakers will be allowed three minutes to comment. After three minutes, the speaker's microphone will be muted and a thirty second reminder will be provided. I ask that all participants except the council members keep their phones on mute until they are recognized to speak and please press star six to speak. We'll begin with an invocation from Pastor Caleb Bonwell of Church of the Open Arms United Church of Christ. Pastor, are you here on the line with us?
I am.
All right, great. Well, the floor is yours.
Well, as we begin this day, I want us to take a few moments to center ourselves by taking a few of the deepest breaths that we may take today. So completely inhale to your lungs capacity. And exhale fully. Allowing God's calm and peace to wash over our bodies. Oh, holy one. We direct our minds to call forth those folks in our personal lives who are in need today. The ones we know who are in need of healing or safety. The ones who require employment. Those who seek justice. Those who crave reconciliation. And deserve equity. We remember that beyond our own circles of community, there are folks within this city we have not yet met. Who also have similar needs. We ask that you bless these public servants with wisdom and compassion to work on behalf of the whole. To set aside this sacred time to co-create with you policies and systems of which you would approve. To make pathways for beauty, for shelter, for protection and opportunity. For joy and kindness, for grace and peace, for goodness, and most importantly, for love. Guide and bless the work you set before us this day, in your many names we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor, so much. All right, well, I call this meeting of the city council to order. We have nothing from offices of mayor, but we do have item four, presentations and discussion of fiscal year twenty-two proposed budget. This is the latest in our series of budget hearings, and we have three items to hear about today. Items four A, four B, and four C, which are public works, utilities, and airports respectively. And we have no votes today. So from here, I'll turn it over to the city manager for these presentations.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mayor said, we'll have three budget presentations from departments today. This is our last series of budget presentations. We do also on item five have a presentation of the budget comments. That'll be provided in the summary form, and then all the details will be provided to the council and posted for the public to see. Doug Dowler, our budget director, will provide that. To start us off this morning, we will have our public works director, Eric Winger, start us off with the presentation on the public works budget.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm working to get this screen shared so we can begin this morning. Are you able to see this?
Yes, we can see it.
Again, thank you for the opportunity to present the public works department proposed budget for fiscal for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. My name is Eric Winger. I'm the public works director for Oklahoma City. My first comments, I'd like to just appreciate all the dedication from staff. Obviously, these presentations and the budget that you're about to receive is generated by a number of individuals, and my thanks to Debbie Miller and Billy Little, but also all of our division heads for assembling the information. And then also Shannon Cox for assembling the presentation today. Our budget begins on page C, one fifty-seven, so if you have the budget book in front of you, it will begin there. I'd like to begin with just the mission of public works, and this aligns with our strategic business plan. And it's provide infrastructure construction, private construction review, and emergency first response services so that our residents can live, work, and play in a safe environment. And obviously, these are several of the values that we lead each day as we as we work for our residents and to deliver quality public work services. This infographic is now before you. This is the proposed position totals for the department. It outlines each of the seven divisions. Our largest division is our streets maintenance division with a proposed total personnel of two hundred and thirty-six. Our smallest division is traffic. This year, we're proposing to increase from three hundred and ninety-nine to four hundred and seventeen positions. So we're looking on this proposed budget to add eighteen new positions. Many of these are restorations, but eighteen over the prior year. This next graphic really highlights just the size of Oklahoma City, and it's one of those, as we look at the services that public works delivers. We're looking at a at a city that has over twelve thousand traffic signals, over seven hundred and ninety signalized intersections. Some of the things that we talk about regularly is the number of miles of roadway in Oklahoma City. We have over thirty-six hundred center line miles. That equates to over eight thousand lane miles of street in Oklahoma City. That's a distance of driving to Anchorage, Alaska, and back. So it really puts down a lot of pavement, a lot of pavement maintenance responsibilities. And that comes with a lot of traffic control signs and different infrastructure components. During this past year, we really had a renewed commitment from our crews and also from our staff during the pandemic. You know, there's a lot of uncertainty and a lot of unknown this past year. Some of the highlights that we found, we did engage a new electronic planner view process that was very beneficial for our engineers and our developers and our and our property owners as they continue to do business with Oklahoma City. It's provided for seamless transition, you know, from what was a paper-based process to an electronic plans review and approval process. We actually saw the number of permits and plans reviewed increase last year. Our reviews increased from nearly twenty-three hundred to thirty-eight hundred compared to the prior fiscal year. Our city crews also responded to two major storm responses. You may recall the October ice event, and then we also had the February significant freeze and snow events. Our bond projects increased the number of awards from ninety-three million to a hundred and twenty-five million. And we continue to maintain service with work zone inspections, resident communications. Of course, we've also responded to a number of action center requests. One of the areas that we had the most challenge was in our stormwater quality and on our outreach. Typically, we do a lot of in-person type outreach, but this last year we found new ways to do take home experiments, department-wide social media posts, and a lot of just digital contacts and communications that we'd not had done before. So my appreciation to all the city staff and their and their commitment to last year. As we look at the line of business for public works and as we look at the different divisions and as we propose the budget, we do have seven major divisions, administration, engineering, field services, project management, stormwater quality, streets, traffic drainage maintenance, and then also our traffic management division. And this is a summary of the budget comparing last year to the proposed budget for FY twenty-two. So you'll see the divisions on the left side. I'm going to speak in the two different categories of what the budget is including. The first two columns are the prior year budget FY twenty-one. The next two columns are the FY twenty-two proposed budget, and then the final column on the far right is the change in the actual budget. Our budget is broken into operating and departmental totals. So I'm going to go to the bottom of the slide first. Departmental budget total is actually reducing from three hundred and fourteen million to two hundred and fifty-one million. So let me explain. One of the items that's included in the public works budget is capital expenses. One of the major programs that we're managing is the Better Street Safer City program. That program is continuing as planned, but it is a program that is is a limited funding source. And so as we complete that sales tax, we're actually seeing that program itself reduce, and that's really the major reduction as a part of the total budget for public works. But let me move up and to about the bottom, the middle of the page. The operating expenses for public works are actually increasing from fifty-two point four million to fifty-three point seven million. This is where the eighteen additional positions are being proposed. A lot of the proposed positions are actually their the returning positions, ones that were previously cut in prior years. Again, going from three hundred and ninety-nine to four hundred and seventeen. I'm going to show a few more slides to help explain this a little bit better. So our budget changes are in two major categories in personnel and also construction materials. And this is a summary of the personnel budget changes. So this is the eighteen positions. We're looking to restore eight positions in the streets, traffic drainage maintenance division. Two and project management. The ones in project management are actually to support our geo geo bond program. We have two in the engineering technical review. This is going to assist with our technical review with our response to engineering plans and developers. If we've seen an increase in the number of plans and reviews, we have two for Oklahoma River Maintenance. We have two for information technology and records, one in stormwater quality, and then also one in engineering contracts management. The position that's being added in engineering contracts management is a local business utilization coordinator. Looking to reach out this year to our small and disadvantaged businesses to help encourage and promote doing business with the city, both from professional contracts and also construction contracts. The material budget changes, as we continue to increase the number of bike lanes throughout Oklahoma City, we're looking to add a bike lane maintenance material crew to actually make sure that we keep those bike lanes in in good condition. So by funding source, when we look at the overall budget of two hundred and fifty-one million, the largest component of that budget source is the Better Street Safer City program. You'll see that in the blue shade of this graph. It's fifty-five percent of the departmental total. But you'll see the other components with the general fund at thirty-four million, the drainage utility at twenty-eight million, also impact fees at thirty-seven million. Obviously, those are different programs that the public works department continues to work on and are funded by. This larger component of Better Street Safer City, I'm going to show a slide a little bit later in the presentation that shows how we're continuing to implement those projects. But that total is decreasing each year going forward. When we look at the public works operating budget, and this is going to be for personnel services at fifty-four million, again, streets, traffic drainage maintenance with nearly half the employees accounts for nearly half of the public works budget at forty-nine percent. You'll see the breakdown with the other divisions, including administration, engineering, field services, project management, and also stormwater quality included. So these next few slides, I'm going to present some of the details of each of the individual divisions. And the first one I'm going to begin with is the administration division with a budget of nine point three million and twenty-four positions. Administration division is the communications with the Action Center, the public outreach and education. It's also our financial management, which includes our geo geo bond program. When we look at information technology, it's a lot of our GIS and mapping systems. It also includes our business intelligence and software as we as we complete responses to our residents and to our engineers and to our contractors. Then we also have records management, which includes many of the project records. But one of the components of administration that we'll be seeing some change in this month is the reopening of the James D Couch Municipal Building to the public. And we're actually staffing a business center. In public works, we'll have staff that are included in that office for direct outreach to residents. Our engineering division with the budget, proposed budget of four point seven million and twenty-eight positions. This is drainage engineering, technical review, and paving engineering. This is again where we have staff that respond to drainage complaints and drainage investigations. We also review developments and new drainage projects. In the technical review, we are looking to add a technical review liaison as a part of the budget this year. This again is to enhance a lot of the outreach with with questions and contacts that we receive from our private construction community. We're also looking to add additional engineering assistance to assist with a lot of the permits that we're starting to see increases in as well. So we're starting to see increases in numbers of revocable permits. Some of these are due to a lot of the implementation of small cell sites in Oklahoma City, but also just additional construction and things that are occurring in the right of way. This last section is paving engineering, and they're responsible for most of the street resurfacing projects, specifications, and project management. I mentioned technical review, and as we look at strategic business planning, and as we look at leading for results, the number of permits reviewed has increased from about twenty-three hundred to thirty-eight hundred, and this is a breakdown of some of those those permits. I mentioned a lot of the right-of-way revocable permits, but you'll see that they include floodplain and event permits as well. The number of plans actually also increased slightly, but it's holding steady at about a thousand plans that are reviewed each year. And this is a summary of looking at some previous fiscal years of both permits and plans reviewed. The plans reviewed, you'll see that in fiscal year seventeen and eighteen, we're running around seven hundred, just a little over. In FY nineteen, we increased to a thousand, and in FY twenty, even through the pandemic, they were maintained at about a thousand plans reviewed. So operations have been really consistent and maintained. As we look at the permits reviewed, we don't have a history back to FY seventeen and eighteen. But again, we're seeing significant increases in the number of permits that are being requested, the reviews that are required, and then, of course, the approvals that are granted. Another component of technical review that's a part of strategic business planning is our response times. We do establish and have established a first plan review within four weeks of its submittal. That actually increased in FY nineteen is when was maintained in FY twenty. So eighty-five percent of plans received by the city reviewed in four weeks or less. Many of those are sometimes in cases of three weeks. We are managing all permits considered and all plans considered at eighty-five percent. So we've met that goal and are maintaining that goal this year. As we move to field services, field services is our division that oversees the construction inspection inspections and quality control in our right-of-way. This includes water, sewer, drainage, streets, traffic control devices, and also ADA compliance. It's a budget of four point three million and forty-eight positions. Consists mostly of inspectors that are in the field. We completed nearly eight thousand right-of-way inspections. We have construction inspections that exceeded twenty-seven thousand, and this is a value of of work. And a lot of this is private work that's occurring in the right-of-way that's over four hundred and fifty million. As we look at strategic business planning, these are the number of work orders. I mean, you'll see that we've crossed over two years here, but we have maintained on on average. Work order inspections have been consistent. We've actually seen a slight increase just in the last quarter from FY twenty-one coming into quarter three of FY twenty-one. So again, I think that this is promising for Oklahoma City as we look at just construction completing and moving forward. We just really did not see a decrease in in the totals for last year. Moving to project management, this includes contract administration, facilities, and infrastructure. This is where our geo bond program and our Better Street Safer City programs are managed. Budget is four point two million and thirty-six positions. This graph helps show the output in the dollar value of projects awarded each year going back to calendar year seventeen. Calendar year seventeen, we did not have the Better Street Safer City programming. You'll see that the public works department delivered about seventy-seven million in total construction that year. But with the introduction of Better Street Safer City in calendar year twenty eighteen, we saw that increase to a hundred and eleven million. The blue totals are the bond program. The purple totals are the sales tax program. You'll see that we had a peak year in the sales tax in calendar year twenty nineteen where the sales tax program nearly equaled the bond program. But the bond program going into calendar year twenty and going further into calendar year twenty-one, the bond program is what is actually increasing. But the sales tax program, which you see in the purple, is actually decreasing. So as we work to complete the Better Street Safer City projects, you'll actually see these totals decrease, not just this year, but in future budget years for public works. But we're proposing a staff to maintain more than a hundred million dollars in construction each year moving forward. That'll include just the bond alone once the Better Street Safer City sales tax is completed. Moving to stormwater management, this includes our environmental water quality, household hazardous waste, and our public outreach programs. Pres budget is three point six million and thirty positions. This infographic shows a lot of the stormwater quality year-end review totals. You know, seven million pounds of floatable debris removed from the Oklahoma River, the household hazardous waste facility, over seven hundred and seventy-five thousand pounds of household hazardous waste is collected and removed from the waste stream. This is important because these were pounds of debris and pounds of waste that would have otherwise been in the This is important because these were pounds of debris and pounds of waste that would have otherwise been in the landfill system. Over eleven thousand residents served. You'll see that we also review construction plans, nearly a thousand construction plans reviewed and over ninety-five hundred construction inspections completed. This is the household hazardous waste facility that's located at sixteen twenty-one South Portland. What's important, it is, it serves our residents, but it also serves eight participating cities as well that have MOUs with the city of Oklahoma City. This includes Edmund, The Village, Yukon, Shawnee, Moore, El Reno, War Acres, and also the city of Bethany. The facility is open on Saturdays. You'll see the hours of operation are Tuesday through Friday, nine thirty to six P M, Saturday, eight thirty to eleven thirty A M, but that is closed on Mondays. We actually hold also some annual spring or spring events that are that are cleanup events that are located at Oklahoma City Fairgrounds. This last event was held on April tenth. We had four hundred and fifty-four participants dropping off household hazardous waste at that location. That's the photo on the far right where you see them, where they access through a parking lot and crews and a contractor help receive those waste streams. In our public outreach program, and this is our totals for twenty twenty, we did see a decrease in twenty twenty since so much of our outreach is in-person contacts. It also includes contacts with our schools. So our totals are down for this past year. We are looking for the return of school in all districts, hopefully this fall, so that we can increase those numbers. But again, we still reached out to over thirteen hundred students this past year. The photo that you see on the right is of Wayne Drop. He's our mascot for Public Works as we go out into those schools and reach out to our youth. Again, as we look to try to make a an impression, we realize that catching them at a younger age helps them grow into into being washed from water and environmental quality minded. Streets Traffic Drainage is our largest division, twenty-six point one million, two hundred and thirty-six positions. And this is where we do our street maintenance, our drainage maintenance, and also all of our traffic operations. As we look at condition of city streets and again, strategic business planning in our leading for results totals. This is a running total of the pavement condition index for the city of Oklahoma City. We started tracking in about fiscal year fourteen. You'll see that our pavement condition index was a sixty-three. As a reminder, on pavement condition, this is a score of zero to one hundred, and it helps us rank our pavements. We have a process where we're using both contracts and in equipment, where we're trying to rate streets using digital information and visual assessments with a goal of each year. But we have steadily increased about one point each year. Zero is a is a completely failed and more or less a non-existent street, a one hundred would be a brand new street. So you'll see that we are currently at a sixty-nine with a year end estimate of actually achieving a seventy PCI for a city average. This is really coming from all of the work that has been proved by our residents and our voters for our geo bond program and also our Better Street Safer City program, where we're surfacing literally hundreds of miles of streets each year. We also do street maintenance. These are just some examples of our street crews that are doing pothole repair and street construction. So we do repair streets. Our street maintenance division also constructs and actually builds new streets. This is a lot of the signal maintenance and also the the striping maintenance, the long line maintenance that you see on our city streets replacing stripes. We also do drainage maintenance and mowing. This includes the clearing of bar ditches. This includes also just any of the drainage infrastructure in Oklahoma City. But a lot of the city's detention and retention ponds that are maintained by Public Works, this is some of the mowing that's done to keep those in good repair. The last division that I'm going to present this morning is Traffic Management is our smallest division, budget of one point six million and fifteen positions. This is our traffic engineering and our traffic and transportation services division. This is also the division that oversees the traffic commission. So my final slide, this is really just a next year projected outlook. We're looking to do over a hundred miles of street improvements. This is primarily in street resurfacing. Estimated about fifty-five thousand potholes repaired, and this number is starting to decrease over previous years as we continue to improve city streets. A lot of those worse streets are now resurfaced or new. We have had years of potholes where we've seen as many as eighty to a hundred thousand, but we're estimating about fifty-five thousand this year. Looking to still complete about eleven hundred infrastructure plans reviewed. We'll complete about a hundred and ten million in the geo bond program. More than fourteen million in the Better Streets program. Seventy-five million in facilities. Over thirty thousand inspections this upcoming year. Nearly five hundred million in annual inspections in the right of way. Likely to remove about eight hundred thousand pounds of waste collected through the H H W facility and then nearly two thousand permits. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. For more information about Public Works, we encourage you to go to OKC.gov forward slash P W. We've got all of our services and our and our programs online and also our contact informations.
Mark Stonecifer here. Can you hear me? A great presentation, a lot of great stuff. The two things that really jumped out at me, and I want to commend you and your staff are the permits and plans review and inspection, which if we're eighty-five percent in less than four weeks, that that is just wonderful news. I'm very proud of that accomplishment, first of all, and I want to thank you for it. But the one, the other thing that that you mentioned with as far as our permit reviews and plan inspections going from twenty-three hundred to thirty-eight hundred reviews. Do you think that just having two engineering technical review personnel and one technical review physician is enough for that, those increased numbers?
We do for this upcoming year. I think if the numbers continue to increase over the expected totals, that we will likely need to recommend additional staff. But we do think that the two additional staff are going to be sufficient for the upcoming year.
I hear a lot from developers around the city, just with the construction costs escalating post pandemic. Do you foresee that in slowing down our our permits and plans that are submitted to the city?
You know, it's a, it's hard to, it's hard to say. I mean, we still see that the plans and the permitting process are proceeding. So even during the pandemic, where there may have been a fewer number of construction projects, the number of plans were still maintained. You know, for city projects, I would, I would say that we're proceeding on city projects, just using budgeted reserves or using our contingency funds to ensure that we're moving city projects forward. I would hope to see that that likely would be the same case for the private developers as well, but it's just probably a little bit too soon for us to know that for sure.
The other thing that jumps out at me is that when I first came on the council in twenty fifteen, we were looking at around eighty-five thousand, the number of potholes repaired annually, and that was pretty consistent. And so I also want to commend you on lowering that number to fifty-five thousand. And I also want to encourage our citizens to call us when they see a pothole, so we can continue to fix those, because that's a really important part of our thirty-nine hundred miles of public streets, which I'd never heard the anchorage analogy that was quite interesting, I thought. But great job, great presentation. I appreciate all your hard work and thank you.
Thank you.
Director Winger.
Yes.
First of all, thank you so much for your tireless efforts trying to keep our streets paved and the drainage ditch is cleared and and answering all of our questions as new council members for our citizens that that as you are acutely aware, have lots of questions about drainage in Ward Three for sure. You're the number one person that we go to with seventy-five percent of those contacts from citizens. And so the task ahead of you and behind you has been a monumental one, and you have taken it in stride and with grace and dignity, and I appreciate that. And I know the citizens of Ward Three do too. You know, I just want you and your staff to know how much we appreciate the efforts that you go through every day. The hundred and ten percent that they've given through the pandemic without missing, maybe working from home, working from the office, whatever it has taken to keep things on track. You know, like you said, it's really remarkable how essential your workers have been and your staff and everybody in the field through everything that's been going on. And I just want to appreciate you very much for that. I had a couple of questions. And do you have any idea, top of your head, and I won't hold you to it later, and how many miles of drainage are privately owned? And how might a citizen find out if the drainage that is on or near their property is is city maintained versus should be privately maintained?
So I don't know the number of private drainage miles in Oklahoma City. It's maybe a number that we could estimate using a GIS system, but we've not calculated that before. But by far, the number of public miles of drainage maintained is is just a fraction of that total. Our office, you know, if a if a resident or a property owner does have a question about whether their drainage channel is private or public, ask that they just contact our city's Action Center. They can direct that information directly to Public Works. We do have staff that are ready and available to assist in that review and and respond to them directly. So we encourage them to just contact the Action Center and and request that question there.
Okay, perfect. And then I know I wanted to share with you, you know, in my conversations with the development community, how much they appreciate the improvements over the last several years with the permitting process and the the digital opportunities and kind of mainstreaming and organizing the reviews going on simultaneously rather than the department to department. I know it's been several years now that that's kind of been in place, but they do continue to mention that in our conversations about how much improved it's been over these last several years. So again, kudos to you and your team. Excellent presentation this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric.
Yes, good morning, Councilman.
Hi, good morning. It's going to sound corny. I I'm trying to make it not, but I thought a whole lot over the last few weeks about the work you all are doing within Public Works. And I'm just very appreciative. And I think something I have a difficulty communicating in this moment to you is I know that for the last two years and some change that I've served on council, I know that there are a lot of moments where I've challenged you on some ideas, and I know you have always been so gracious and knowledgeable, and you've challenged me. And I think something I have a difficult time communicating to you in this moment is how much, not only do I appreciate the work, but the the intellectual back and forth. And I hope that you know that even in those moments of where we're challenging each other, that that is never meant to be anything other than a respectful back and forth. I I've just thought a lot about that recently, so I just really want to make sure I communicate that to you and to your team.
No, thank you. No. Appreciate being able to assist anytime we can and hopefully providing the background that's needed to make good decisions.
Yeah, absolutely. And you know, again, I keep mentioning this every once in a while on council, just generally like, it's just my classroom background. I just love that back and forth, and even when it's 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 passionate, I just I never think of it as disrespectful. So I just, I really want to make sure, especially to you, because as Councilwoman Young just said, you are at the heart of so much of the work on our residents' mind, whether it's drainage to our streets, to walkability, to bike infrastructure, to the implementation of Better Streets and Maps projects, like you all at Public Works are just and I'm just saying stuff you already know, but I think sometimes it's important to hear that affirmation. So just really wanted to take time today to communicate that to you and your team. And anyone who's not on this call on your team today, you just send that kindness from Ward Two to them, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So next, I wanted to also congratulate you all on getting us to a place where the average pavement condition index is at seventy. I think that is important. That is one of those things you have taught me in the last two years is the import, how we how we determine the condition of a street. And I would say to anybody who is watching this, who's a resident, who might not be familiar with that process, to do a quick Google search, you know, OKC pavement condition index, and it'll come right up. And you can see for yourself the condition of your street. And it's been perspective shifting for me and for some of my residents, whenever, you know, someone's like, I have the worst road. It, there could not be a worse road in this whole city than the road I have. And I'm like, oh, yeah, no, I remember. I was out there knocking doors. Let's see what the score is. And then when we look up that score and then when I with them, you know, you can see theirs is maybe in yellow and then right off in the corner, something reds like, oh, what's going on over here? And you see something worse, right? And so when I say perspective shifting, that PCI map, and I can't encourage everyone enough to dig into it. It gives me a better perspective of the needs across all of Ward Two and our city. And so it calms me down when I'm a very impatient person who wants things fixed right now. So I just really wanted to highlight the work you all have done to get us to a place where the streets are, in fact, wait for it, better. So thank you for that work. The other thing I wanted to say, I didn't realize traffic was the smallest. And can you help me understand why that is and do is there, is there, is there too much pressure with that, 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 that smallness, you know? Like what, how did we get to this place where that's where they are?
You know, I probably could explain a little bit better. So the traffic engineering division is really the professional and engineering staff that is our smallest division. But that does not include our traffic maintenance staff, which is a part of Streets Traffic Drainage Maintenance. So we we have a second team that's actually in the field that's doing all the traffic maintenance. So just to hopefully clear that a little bit, but the traffic engineering division, which is predominantly engineers and and technical reviewers. They really are the ones that receive all the requests from the residents. Could be for a stop sign. It could be for a new signal. They organize the Transportation and Traffic Commission meetings. They chair those meetings. But but mostly they look at technical review. I think that they're they're appropriately staffed moving forward. But again, as we continue to increase or see increases in traffic requests in the city, it may be something that we need to look at in the future, but we're able to maintain. We're getting good reviews from our traffic commission about the response and and the support that they receive from our city traffic engineering division. So it is the smallest division, but it's not the only group of employees in Public Works that are working on traffic matters.
Super helpful, and that also reminds me to give a shout out to Ward Two Traffic Commissioner, Rob Littlefield, who also knowledgeable, also challenges me. I challenge him. Y'all, those are some of my favorite conversations to be in is with Rob Littlefield and also to J B Shulone in Ward Six, who both of them have really long taught me some best practices when it comes to walkability, traffic calming, and they love talking with the neighborhoods, and I just really appreciate both of them. I haven't met the other traffic commissioners, so there's nothing personal to them. It's just, I know these two. The other kind of couple things I wanted to ask about was with the cost that we're seeing right now because of the pandemic, as Councilman Stonecifer is describing. What has been the history when we've experienced those fluctuations within the marketplace? What's been the, what, how do we respond when it comes to like our bond projects? I know when we go out to bid, we're always kind of hoping for, you know, things to come in under, you know, what the the bid price was. But like, what has been the history? How do we manage when the price of concrete is rising or the price of this, that or the other within the market because of some externality?
So it is a challenge when we see fluctuations like the ones that are occurring now this year with increased costs, just overall. It's it's in steel, it's in concrete, it's in petroleum-based products. And so it not just affects our street and and infrastructure projects, but also our building projects as well. We've seen over the past several months between a twenty-five and thirty-five percent in overall pricing just on bids received on city projects. You know, we've seen this before. And and one of the things that we use as a tool, at least in project management, is making sure that we have contingency funds assigned to each individual project, and then in a lot of cases, assigned to programs that can help cover those increases in prices temporarily. So we budget So we budget contingencies that we're having to use now today on city projects to award projects that are coming in higher than anticipated, but ensuring that we can still go out and complete that work. Doesn't mean that we're adding additional scope to the project. It's just recovering the increase in cost. We were absorbing about a hundred percent of that contingency right now. So the prices can't continue to increase and for us to continue to make those contract awards. So another tool that we use is we reevaluate the scope of work on projects continually. So if the price goes up and is maintained at a high rate, we sometimes will have to reduce the amount of work on a project, i.e. make the the project slightly smaller so that we can afford that. We're starting to see that with the use of bid alternates. And so that may be a conversation on future projects as we present projects to the council, using a lot of bid alternates to help control our cost. But we're committed to to moving forward on projects, using those tools, using contingency funds when available, looking at alternatives as as we can work with those consultants in design of those projects and hopefully receiving bids on projects that will allow us to continue with construction going into this year and and next.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Speaking of helpful, can you help our residents better understand? And I just see it all the time. And the thing I'm not supposed to do is read the comments on, you know, news stories or whatever. But can you help our residents and me, quite frankly? I feel like I've gotten an understanding of this over the last couple of years, but you know, I feel like when residents think of a city budget and let's say they call in or write in or report to Action Center, my neighborhood street needs to be repaved. It's in the condition that's bad. I think there's confusion insofar as how our annual budget works, that why can't we tap into that annual budget? Now that I've told you I have this street in the condition it is in, or I want a sidewalk, or this drainage in my neighborhood. I mean, I'm just replaying instances of of residents in my head saying these things. I think for a lot of them, not all of them, but for a lot of residents who are, you know, well educated, thoughtful, respectful, I think they want the annual budget in that moment to address that thing. And I have found that a lot of my job in the last two years as both councilperson and teacher is is to take what I've learned from the last several years of serving on COPPA and serving now on this council to explain the role that the Better Streets Safer City twenty seventeen marketed election, right, that what the bonds do every tenure. And I I've had to explain that those, that's why those infrastructure bonds are so important. And that generally, you know, will become very clear to our residents. But what then is the role of the annual budget? And you just kind of walked us through a lot of it, but like, can you help us better understand why our annual budget does not address, like, I need my road resurfaced, or I need a new sidewalk, or fix this this infrastructure thing? Like, what is that conversation like? And if my question doesn't make sense, let me know. But it's just something I've been realizing in communications with residents.
Yeah, I think it's the presentations that have been made to the council with the other departments and probably a lot of the information that Doug Diller has presented to the council. You know, the overall city budget for the various departments, you know, is predominantly sales tax based. And so the cities, the cities revenues, now there are other revenues, but I'm just saying predominantly sales tax based, provide for those personnel services for the most part. Public Works is the fourth largest department. But that's behind police, fire, and utilities. And so a lot of the city's general fund or the overall budget is funding those other key and core services for Oklahoma City residents, also to promote safety and and security throughout the community. So when we look at the Public Works budget, you know, we're looking at personnel services. As I mentioned, we've got two hundred and fifty one million as the proposed budget for next year, but only fifty four million of that is for personnel services. The difference in that really is the Better Streets Safer City program, which is included in the budget. But again, those are the materials that are going into street construction. Those are the materials that are going into enhancements for bike, trail, and sidewalk. And once those sales tax funds are exhausted, the Public Works budget is going to be much less, but it's still going to provide the same level of personnel services. The bond program is the program that is where we fund the majority of the city's capital expenses for streets, drainage, and traffic maintenance. So it's vital that Oklahoma City voters and residents hopefully support the city in future bond programs, as that is the number one source for funds for street resurfacing. Now, the general fund does include repair. We generally fund the repair of streets, the repair of drainage, i.e. potholes and clearing of inlets. That's all done through the general fund, but it doesn't provide for those new roads. It doesn't provide for those new trails or those new bike lanes as a part of the city general fund. So again, we go back to either the bond issue, where we look at initiatives like the Better Streets Safer City Sales Tax Program that help provide those millions of dollars, those hundreds of millions of dollars for that type of work. And as I noted in the earlier part of the presentation, with the number of of lane miles of streets that we have over eight thousand, it does take initiatives like the bond and sales tax programs to help maintain Oklahoma City.
Thank you for your clarifications. And I mean, I, it, just to come full circle here and in conclusion, it's why I'm so appreciative of the work you and your team do. It's also why I hope you and your team are exercising a lot of self-care, because I know that you get a lot of those sort of questions. And I think, not I mean, think, the, one of the main reasons why I speak about Oklahoma City history at length, the way I do on this council, y'all, is because in hearing you describe it the way you just did, Eric, helps me understand why. It's the importance of the bonds. And more I learned, kind of two main things about our city history was that, one, in the seventies and eighties, especially the eighties, we couldn't pass a bond to save our lives. I couldn't, wouldn't do it, couldn't, wouldn't do it. And now I look at that budget presentation you just did. And I imagine a world for this city without a bond. And that's what nineteen eighties Oklahoma City was. And that's, that's what we must never repeat. And so that faith in government, that and and efficient government and thoughtful the way you're doing it, I just think is so important. And it's, I can see it much more clearly now. And then I think the other reason why I always return to Oklahoma City history and speak about it is I think, kind of to Councilman Stone Cypher's observation about the lane miles from here to Anchorage and back. You know, that's not accidental. Like, unfortunately, and I really mean this, unfortunately, you know, about seven decades ago, we just went on this great annexation spree and just gobbled up. And now we have this responsibility in front of us of so many streets and so much maintenance of those streets. And the reason why I say it's unfortunate is that so many of our residents, A, don't know that history, B, only know the frustration of the maintenance needs. And I think that is something I'm encouraged that we are telling that that story better, preaching Boomtown to everybody. Because I don't like seeing our residents frustrated in the belief that like their government, our local government is unresponsive to them. It's not that. That's not who my understanding of Public Works or this body, it's that our very history has given us this incredible responsibility of mile after mile of infrastructure. And I just, I just, that's, that's why I began my remarks the way I did with you, Eric, is I understand, I am understanding better as I learn more the responsibility given to you all in terms of that maintenance. And I know the frustration that I hear from residents. And if I'm hearing it, I know you all are as well. And I know you must have heard it even more during the pandemic, which was a stressful time for everybody. So I guess that's my way of saying grace, like a little bit of grace to you and your folk, because I can't imagine being in your position. And and in that way, you know, to Craig and his team too, like six hundred and twenty something square miles, that ain't easy. That is not easy. And so if y'all ever wonder why I always go back to that history, it's because I want our residents to know the context for why we got here so that they understand where their from straight, your frustrations are coming from. Because I think it's important that they know that their local government is working for them. So those are my, those are my remarks. So and and questions. And Eric, again, just thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, if that's all the comments from council, we do have one resident who has signed up to speak on this item, but I think that concludes your portion. Thank you, Eric, very much. Appreciate you. Is John Pettis on the line?
You may need to start six, John.
Mr. Pettis, start six. No, okay. All right, back to you, Mr. City Manager.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and thanks again to Eric. I appreciate his presentation, his leadership in the city, as everyone has described, such a challenging job, covering so much area. Another one of our departments that has that challenge is our Utilities Department. Next up, we have Chris Browning, our Utilities Director, to present the Utilities Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman, and good morning, everyone. Happy to be here to present the F Y twenty two proposed budget for the Utilities Department. Our budget starts on page C one sixty nine of the budget book. But before we get started, I'd like to recognize a couple, a couple of key staff members in the development of the budget. Michelle Lysenby is with us this morning. She's the Trust Specialist, and she is going to help me present this morning. And by the way, today's her birthday. So happy birthday, Michelle. Secondly, Vanessa Aguilar is our Business Manager and her and her staff really worked very, very hard to get the budget ready for me to present to you all for consideration. So first of all, let's talk about the Utilities Mission Statement. So we're, we're, we provide water, wastewater, and trash collection services to nearly every person in Oklahoma City every day to protect public health, the environment, and to enhance economic prosperity, not just for Oklahoma City, but for the central Oklahoma region. Several years ago, to align with council priorities, the Utilities Department developed core business initiatives, and I'd like to go over those briefly with you all this morning. We're responsible for not only providing a safe work environment for our employees, but also the public. We do quite a bit of work throughout the city, so we need to protect the public as well. And we're committed to providing quality customer service and meeting expectations for effective service delivery through our, through our customer service initiative. Securing long term water supply and reliably delivering it to central Oklahoma is paramount. Aqua will maintain and upgrade our systems to enhance the reliability and resiliency of our utility systems to minimize the likelihood of service disruptions. The Water Trust will follow strong financial management principles to maintain the highest available credit ratings for our debt issuances, and we are triple A rated by both Moody's and Standard and Poor's. And then finally, we're committed to full compliance with regulations and directives of all regulatory agencies. So the proposed F Y twenty two budget is seven hundred and twenty four million dollars. Capital improvements total four hundred and fifty one million. And then the utility operations will be one hundred and one million. That is the amount that we plan to transfer to the city for funding operations, including salaries, supplies, and power. Debt service this year is expected to be sixty two million dollars. Trust operations, forty two million dollars. And and within the trust operations category includes franchise fees and system lease payments to the city. Professional services, including banking, legal, our trust engineer, financial advisory, billing administration services. So we have technical support for our billing system and other support services, including pavement repair. When we go out and we repair a water main or a water service, or we install a main or a service, we have to repair pavements. So we we have our pavement repair services, our landscape and driveway repair services. We have a mowing agreement with Parks and Rec to mow all of our properties, and and the trust owns quite a bit of property. So it's a pretty big job every year for Parks and Rec to keep our our grass cut. Natural gas and liquid fuels, we have a C N G fueling station that we provide service to not only city, but to the public here. And then licensing and software support. Our solid waste service contracts total thirty seven million this year. That includes trash, bulky, and recycling contracts with waste management is twenty seven million dollars. Landfill contracts total about seven million dollars. And our fleet maintenance services primarily for our solid waste collection vehicles totals three million dollars. And then we have wastewater treatment facility operations contracts. They total nineteen million dollars. We have a contract operator who operates and maintains all four of our wastewater treatment facilities. And then we intend to deposit about seven million dollars this year into reserves, and that's primarily into the Storm Reserve Fund. So where does that money come from? So we have debt construction funds that this year we anticipate borrowing two hundred and ten million dollars. Of that water is ninety eight million, and wastewater is one hundred and twenty, one hundred and twelve million. We have service charges where we charge for our water and our wastewater and our trash collection services. Those are the revenues that come in that that totals the the biggest portion of our funding, and that's three hundred and seventy six million dollars. Water is one hundred and ninety two million, wastewater is one hundred and twenty two million. This solid waste management is sixty two million dollars. And then we have cash reserves, so we intend to bring one hundred and twenty two million dollars of cash reserves into into the funding this year. Fifty million of that will cover water construction, and seventy two million will cover wastewater construction. And then we have other sources of of funding that total about eight million dollars. That's interest off some of our investments. Billing service fee chargebacks, where our water bills include not only water sewer and and trash collection services, but also stormwater and ems. So we have a number of proposed enhancements this year, and we will start with customer service. So we, we have a public information and marketing function that was standalone, but we we have moved that function over to customer service so that it centralizes and unifies the customer messaging all across the communication channels that we deal with each and every day. We need to add a training analysis for specialized training needs in the Utilities Customer Service Group. So as you can imagine, in our call center, we have a a number of challenges there that evolve constantly. So what we, what we need to do is bring in a specialist who can analyze the types of phone calls we have, the types of technology we have, and the and the gaps in that technology that would enable us to better serve our customers. So we would like to add a a training analyst to help us better understand what those gaps are. And then in our private development group, as as Eric spoke about a little earlier, we, we look at just about as many plans every year as as Public Works does. Our L F R goal is is to review plans and return those plans to the engineers, the developers' engineers, within ten business days. So what we'd like to do is add a unit operations supervisor to make that a little bit more seamless, so that this person can coordinate those activities better through our electronic plan review process. So water supply, as I mentioned earlier, is is a pretty critical function of our organization. So we created the Southwest Water Supply Division last year. And what we found is we have some challenges because of the distance that we deal with. Our our southeast Oklahoma facilities are anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and thirty miles away. So logistics are are very difficult. We, we try to send people down specialized skills down to those pumping stations and those facilities that we have down in southeast Oklahoma to do some maintenance and 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 repair work on those pump stations and facilities, but it just, just isn't very efficient. So what we'd like to do is add two water supply mechanics to the group that we have down there right now. Our L F R goal is to is to be eighty percent planned and scheduled so that we minimize the likelihood of failure. And right now, we're at about forty six percent. So if we add those two additional water supply mechanics, we think we can hit our L F R goals. And right now we're at about forty-six percent. So if we add those two additional water supply mechanics, we think we can hit our LFR goals. In addition to that, we're having challenges with our electric, electrical maintenance. But we don't have an, an industrial electrician down there and we're having to send that industrial electrician from Oklahoma City down there to do work. And like I said a minute ago, it's just not very efficient. And so out of the eighty percent LFR goal, we're, we're, we're meeting about twenty-nine percent of that planned, scheduled work. The way we're operating today. So it's, it's important that we add that position down there. And then finally, we'd like to add a water supply support worker. So our trained mechanics and, and our service. Staff down, down in Atoka and McGee Creek are actually having to cut the grass and there's quite a bit of grass down there and they're doing the building maintenance. In addition to the pumps and motor maintenance. And we don't think that's a very effective way to manage that work. So we would like to add a water supply support worker to do those functions for us and let the mechanics. And the, the highly skilled folks pay more attention to the electronics and the, and the mechanical equipment that we have in, in southeast Oklahoma. In the area of system reliability, a few years ago, we established an asset management program. And that program was to develop, to help us analyze the condition of our assets and, and we have quite, quite a bit of infrastructure in the ground. We have over four, four thousand miles of water line. And over three thousand miles of sewer line in the ground and, and multiple lift stations and pumping stations throughout the city. So we need to know what the condition is rather than run to fail and then fix it. We want to know what's the remaining useful life and how can we keep the service level? At, at, at the desired level of service that our customers expect. And so we developed an asset management program a few years ago and right now we're. Physically looking at all of our sewer lines throughout the city. We have camera inspections of all of our sewer lines to see where we may have failures or potential failures so that we can. Better utilize our funding in those areas rather than just replacing X number of miles of pipe per year because of H. We currently look at about ten percent of the system annually, so that's about three hundred miles annually that we, we analyze and we collect a lot of data, as you can imagine. So we collect at least a terabyte, maybe more data every year. So in this area, we would like to add a GIS analyst to help us manage those terabytes of data that we collect annually. We would like to improve the wastewater system reliability. The number one cause of blockages in the wastewater system is grease. Grease builds up from. Some commercial establishments, but we have a pretty good, pretty good control on them, but where we cannot control. Grease entering into the system is the large multifamily communities. There, there's no technology available to eliminate that grease from entering into our system from those types of facilities. So we just have to manage the grease when it does enter the system. And we use chemicals and enzymes to do that. So we're, we're going to enhance our ability throughout the system by adding. A number of more sites throughout the city at a cost of about three hundred thousand dollars per year for the equipment and for the. Chemicals and enzymes that we would add to minimize the likelihood of grease buildup in the system. With the electrical and mechanical facilities maintenance, as I mentioned, we have quite a few lift stations and booster stations. We have an LFR goal in, in, in those two areas of eighty percent planned and scheduled and again to limit the potential failure. Right now we're meeting about seventy-one percent of that goal. We have sixty-nine lift stations and fourteen hundred pieces of equipment that we maintain. So we'd like to add a facilities and plant mechanic to get us at or above that eight percent target. And then on the electrical side, we need to add an industrial electrician. We have more than eight hundred pieces of equipment across those sixty-nine lift stations. And right now we're, we're failing miserably. We're at fourteen percent planned and scheduled and we really need to get that at a higher number. So. So our goal is eight hun, is, is eighty percent. So if we add an industrial electrician, we believe we can, we can meet that target. And then the area of regulatory compliance, we have a commercial pretreatment program that is mandated by the EPA. This program requires us to permit all industries and all. Commercial. Sites throughout the city who would impact the source system either through. Industrial waste that may be toxic or commercial waste that may cause blockages within the system. So currently we have two environmental unit specialists who, who manage the program. But EPA has come up with an additional. Mandatory. Monitoring program and that's to manage the pharmaceuticals throughout the system. Pharmaceuticals pass through. They're very difficult to remove in the treatment plant and so they end up out in the, in the environment. So. Under the new EPA regulation, we will have to issue an additional four thousand permits throughout the city, so we need to add. Two additional positions to help manage those four thousand permits that we're going to have to issue within the next few years. And then finally. As you all know, we entered into a contract with Tinker Air Force Base last September to take over the operation and maintenance of their water and wastewater system on base. We, under the contract, need to add three staff members who will be onsite at Tinker. We need a site manager. We need an administrative coordinator and also a revenue auditor. As you can imagine, the paperwork. Related to managing the finances on a federal contract are very. Challenging. And so we need to add these three people, these three staff members to help, help do that. But keep in mind, the, the contract. Is fully funded by the federal government, so these three positions will be funded under that contract and they will not be funded using city rate payer funding. We will officially take over that contract in October, October first. Originally it was September first, but the Air Force asked us to postpone that by one month, so we'll be taking over operation of the facility in October of this year. So let me break down. A little bit, the hundred and one million dollars that we plan to transfer over to the city. We have annual salary adjustments. That are generally merit increases and, and the benefit costs that go, go along with those merit increases. So. We intend to. Add eleven positions this year. I know I mentioned more than eleven, but some of those were reclassifying current positions. To better serve our customer base. So we're proposing to add eleven positions that will give the utilities a total of seven hundred and eighty-four. Supplies and services increase, it's about eight hundred thousand dollars this year. We did have a decrease of seven hundred and seventy, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. That city charge backs primarily our salary reserves. We have about a hundred positions vacant. We have pretty good churn in the utilities department. So, so instead of. Keeping those reserves funded at a high level. Budget has reduced those reserves for us so that we have less of an impact on our overall budget. So it looks like this year, the budget increase over last year is one point nine percent. So I'd like to go over briefly some of the challenges that we experienced this year. Of course, the, the COVID nineteen challenges we had to. Restructure many of our divisions in order to meet the demands that our system. Has each year where, you know, we have to continue to pick up the trash. We have to continue to treat the water, treat the wastewater. Fix the pipes, those kinds of things go on day in and day out, no matter what's going on in the environment. And so we put as many people as we could. Through in, in teleworking status where they work from home, we bought the technology for them to be able to do that. We restructured our workforce where people could manage their childcare needs better throughout the year. So we learned a thing or two about ourselves during that time and, and we actually found better ways of, of taking care of business. And then we had the ice storm that everybody remembers. This year, early in the year, all the leaves were still on the trees, so we had a huge amount of debris on the ground. That we had to collect. And then finally, we had the, the severe winter storm in February. Record breaking temperatures, low temperatures. We had a lot of main breaks. We had a lot of service line breaks. We had a lot of customers calling. So that we could turn off their water because their pipes in their homes broke. We had challenges at our water treatment facilities where generally in the wintertime, we do most of our maintenance. So the facilities can't. Function at a high level like they do in the summertime. But yet during that period of time, the water demand was exceeding our normal. Peak demands in the summertime. We more than doubled our normal wintertime water demands. So we had to scramble around. And get those treatment plants back in service so that we could meet the demands and, and we were really having a hard time. With pressures throughout the system and coordinating with the hospitals to make sure they didn't have to evacuate hospitals was a big challenge for our folks. So they worked twenty-four seven. For that whole week and then they were on twelve hour shifts for two weeks after that trying to restore service. And we also found out one of the challenges during that time was effective communication where we needed to communicate directly with our critical customers, those hospitals and those institutions around town. That had to have water to stay in business. And so that, those were all challenging. So. With that said, I, I outlined a number of things that we did to meet those challenges. What I didn't mention in detail was the ice storm. What we did there, we had over a hundred and fifty trucks working throughout the city. We, we hired a couple of contractors who came in along with our forces. We had to keep picking up the trash, so we couldn't, we couldn't just get all of our people lined up to collect limbs. We had to collect the trash. We had to collect the recycle. So we, we brought some contractors in and we ended up collecting a hundred and twenty-five thousand tons of debris. Due to the ice storm. We planned to complete the work into January and to complete the second pass because normally. People will get out some of the debris early and then some more debris later on. So we did two passes throughout the city. And we anticipated we would complete the second pass the end of February. But fortunately, we completed it early in February before the severe cold weather hit. So that was a good thing. For both our, our crews and the public that we serve. So with that, I would like to move into some of the lessons learned related to those challenges. We have a lot of critical infrastructure throughout the city, as you can imagine, and we're trying to build a more resilient, reliable system. So we, we need to be a bit more deliberate when we take our facilities out of service so that we can restore them easily if this happens again. Fortunately, the weather service says this only happens once every hundred years, but we've seen things that only happen once every hundred years happen. More frequently than that. So we're, we're going to do a better job planning. Our maintenance and repair of our water treatment and wastewater treatment plants in the wintertime so that if we do have a severe event, we can get things up and running a lot quicker. We also had a lot of challenges with our diesel equipment. Diesel engines don't like to operate when it's fifteen below zero. So we need to come up with a better way. To facilitate a warming system for those engine blocks so that our, our vehicles and our equipment will, will run. Will start, number one, and then operate during those extreme weather conditions. And then we're developing standardized communication protocols that we can use, just fill in the blanks so that we can quickly communicate with our customers and our regulatory agencies and you all. The elected and appointed officials here in Oklahoma City. So the last thing I'd like to do is go over the. The capital program briefly. That's a big number, four hundred and fifty-one million dollars. So we're building a second pipeline down to Atoka from, from Lake Draper. And the second pipeline is a seventy-two inch line that's a hundred miles long. We currently have a sixty inch pipeline in place, but it is limited in capacity. We have more. Water allocation, more permitted water in southeast Oklahoma. Than we can actually bring to Oklahoma City with our current pipeline. So we're building this new seventy-two inch pipeline. Right now we have a project underway that, that crosses the Canadian River with a tunnel. And we're going to have the new pipe and also the existing pipe that, that crosses. Above the river. We're going to move that pipe underground as well to minimize the likelihood of a failure where a flood with large debris may, may knock that river crossing down. So we're going to bring that pipeline underground as well. It is currently under construction and the project is, is going as planned. So with all the water that we have currently permitted to Oklahoma City, we have projected that we have enough water through twenty-sixty. We can probably stretch it a little further than that because we're getting better at utilizing our water. And so maybe we can go out beyond that. But with this pipeline, we can at least meet all the water demands for twenty-sixty. And that is for central Oklahoma. We serve eighteen other cities and rural water districts within the region as well. So we anticipate awarding two segments. There are nine segments along the Atoka pipeline. We anticipate we'll award two more of those segments this year. And continue that process through the last segments to be awarded are planned out to twenty-twenty-seven. So the estimated cost in FY twenty-two for that project is a hundred and two million dollars. The total cost of that project is over eight hundred million dollars. And then we are planning to upgrade our South Canadian wastewater treatment facility. Currently, the design capacity for that plant is six million gallons a day. And we're very close to six million gallons a day at that facility. So we have designed and getting ready to bid. A, a new wastewater treatment plant that will allow us to treat up to nine million gallons per day. With that added capacity comes added regulatory requirements. So we're having to enhance the treatment capabilities of that plant. In addition to increasing the capacity. So the estimated cost of that plant is a hundred and thirteen million dollars. And it should be completed by twenty-twenty-four. And then the thing that a lot of you all deal with regularly is our neighborhood water and sewer line replacement program. We have. A system here in Oklahoma City that, that dates back a hundred years. So we have some aged water and sewer pipelines in the ground. And so we systematically replace those pipelines and this year we're planning to replace. About sixteen million dollars worth of those pipelines to continue the process. In our asset management program. We. Implemented the first phase where I discussed earlier where we're inspecting our, our wastewater pipes and three hundred miles per year. We'll continue that. And in doing that, we can better prioritize that replacement program that I just spoke about so that we go to the areas that we know. Are nearing the end of their useful life with a high likelihood of failure sometime in the foreseeable future. So we'll be spending. Five point four million for the condition assessment. That is an eight-year program and then we will spend about ten million dollars replacing the wastewater pipes that we find are the highest priority in our system. And then. We have a program that I brought to you all for funding consideration at the last council meeting. It's our automated meter reading program. So the total cost is about 55 million dollars. It's a seven to eight year program. We are planning to replace all meters within our our system throughout the city. There's about 240,000 meters. With an automated meter reading. Register. Right now, we have to go out and read each meter physically. And then issue bills accordingly. So with the automated system. The biggest thing it does for us is it eliminates reading errors. As you can imagine, the meter reader goes out. And they look at 400 to 450 meters a day. And they're going to make mistakes. You know, there it's a 10 digit number that they're entering into a handheld device. And so after you read several hundred, you're bound to make an error or two. And that causes billing errors that cause our customer service staff to deal with customers who are unhappy about. A potential misread and the bill that they received in in accord with that misread. So. The automated system will eliminate all misreads because those automated. Registers cannot read incorrectly. They they always read the correct volume. Or if they, if if there's a malfunction there, there is no read. So we cannot. Misbill one of our customers based on the automated reads. So that's a that's a big deal in in our. In our utility. Then secondly. As you can imagine, during the extreme weather conditions, both in the ice storm and in the snowstorm, we were unable to read a lot of meters. First of all, we couldn't get around very well. Secondly, those beers were buried. And so with an automated read system, we'll always be able to read those beers. And then we have a number of meters over 3000 that are large commercial meters that are underground in vaults. And our meter readers have to enter those vaults to get that read. So with the automated read, they'll no longer have to do that. So that relieves that safety concern. So the estimate for that program for FY22 is about 6 million dollars. And then we have a a program that's been going on or a project rather that's been going on for a number of years and that's connecting the. Hefter and the Draper water treatment facilities. With a pipeline that will enable us to serve the entire city from either treatment plant if there's a disruption of service at that plant for whatever reason. So we have only three segments left to install and then that project will be completed. And that will physically connect the two plants. There is one other leg that that will go north from Draper. But it will help to provide water to Oklahoma City, the downtown area. And those areas to the north and northeast. But it doesn't have anything to do with physically connecting those plants. It's just an addition to this interconnection. So we expect that project to be completed in 2023. And the project estimate for this year is 10 million dollars. And then lastly, we have some. Facility improvements throughout all of our water and wastewater plants that we we have planned over the years. Where we have some of the structures, some of the components. Age beyond their useful life and they need to be replaced. And so the project. The the total project cost for those replacements this year will be 154 million dollars. So that is the summary of our capital program, summary of our proposed budget. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Hi Chris, Mark Stonecifer here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
You know, you talked about the external challenges that we were faced with over the last year. I've never seen anything like it before and utilities are 784 employees. They really shined. I'd give them each one of them a medal if I could because. Those were some of the most difficult circumstances I have ever seen. And I appreciate in this presentation today. That you are telling us that you're looking at that and you're learning from it and you're you're expanding and growing and heading in new directions because of that. And I think one thing that's, so first of all, thank you to you and your staff. Second of all, I know we've got a lot going on right now. And what I mean by that is the the Tinker Air Force Base expansion, the the 72 inch line going to southern Oklahoma to provide. Enough water for our kids and grandkids through 2060. I I was just wondering. When we look at the funding sources and we know that that we have rate payers. Could you go into a little bit and describe the the upcoming rate payer analysis that you're going to conduct and go through to make this a better system?
Yes, sir. So every four to five years, we evaluate our rates to see. First of all, are they adequate to support our our business model? Secondly. Are they fair? Under Oklahoma law. We have to charge our customers, each customer class. What it costs us to provide that customer class service. So we have a residential customer class. We have a non-residential. We have a manufacturing. We have a wholesale. So we have a cost of service. Expert come in and take a look at what does it cost to provide water to those various customer classes so that we don't have any subsidies from one class to the other. Under our residential. Structure, we have four tiers. We have the low volume users, those that use up to 2000 gallons a month. We have the indoor water users. Where they'll use about 10,000 gallons a month. Then we have the folks who have irrigation systems and pools. And they'll use up to 30,000 gallons a month. And then finally, we have. A few customers who use over 30,000 gallons a month in the residential class. And so we 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 want to make sure that all of our customers are treated fairly. And we look at what impact does each each tier in each customer class have on our system and then we. Present recommendations to you all for consideration. For each of those customers. And considering what our operations and capital program need to meet the demands today. To increase our reliability and resiliency. And to meet the demands out into the future. And so we will be presenting that. Study with recommendations to you all next month for consideration. So. We'll have a lot more detail on that in the in the very near future. And we'll be having a more in-depth discussion with you all about that process next month.
Thank you very much, Chris. I really appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Chris, thank you for the presentation. You mentioned something to me the other day that I thought was pretty amazing. Can you just talk briefly about what the. When we were in the middle of the deep freeze, can you talk a little bit about what the load was on our water system versus? Normal?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Normal wintertime demands, daily demands, our system produces about 80 million gallons a day. During that week in February. And even beyond that week, it went on for a couple of weeks, but as the time went on, the the demands diminished a bit till we got back to normal. But we were producing over 150 million gallons a day. You know, people dripping their faucets. And the other thing we found was was very interesting. Our pipelines are buried three to four feet deep. Up north in the colder climates, their pipelines are six to eight feet deep and it's because of the wintertime temperatures. And so we have 4000 miles of pipe. That's that's a million joints of pipe. And each one of those joints has a gasket that keeps it from leaking. Well, when temperatures get really, really cold and those gaskets shrink a little bit, they start leaking. And as you can imagine. A million joints of pipe with just a little bitty leak is a lot of water every day. So we had that to deal with as well. You know, we thought there may be a lot of big main breaks around the city, but we didn't find a lot of big main breaks. We found. A couple of dozen. Small main brakes around town. Now we found a lot of service lines that were broken. But you know, we were dealing with three or 400 leaks a day. And so we had staff working 24/7. To 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 shut the water off. Help people restore service after they got their plumbing fixed. So we we worked quite hard during that time, but the water demands at that time were just unprecedented. I mean, that that's a middle of August demand level, not a. Middle of February demand level. So so that was a pretty big challenge for us.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Really appreciate your work and the work of your team. And as everyone has said, just the great work that was done through. The unprecedented winter storms that we've had, both with debris removal and what we dealt with with that side. As well as the ice storm and the severe cold weather. Just really appreciate that. Should have mentioned that before too with Eric's team. And the work that they did on the roads during different various ice storms that we had and snowstorms through the year as well. So really appreciate. Chris and your leadership and and your team. Thank you for all you all do.
Thank you.
So next up, we have Mark Cranenberg, our airports director. And he's going to give us a presentation on the airports budget.
Thank you, Craig, and good morning, everyone. And I just want to remind Chris that he needed to get a release from me before using that. Slide where he has the airplanes on the ramp there. So I kid, I kid. Mr. Browning from time to time, and I guess it gives me an opportunity. To just say, if it hadn't been said before, that I really appreciate all the work that all the department heads. And support that we give each other. I'm going on 16 years as an airports director and and to me, that is some of the secret sauce. Is how well we all work together. My name is Mark Cranenberg, airports director for the city of Oklahoma City. And as such, I also serve as general manager for the Oklahoma City Airport Trust. I also want to give a couple of thank yous for the presentation preparation. Tara Summerlin, the business manager. And first and foremost, Melissa Fairbrush, the accounting manager for the airport. The airport trust portion of the city's budget is found on page C3 of your budget book. And I'd like to start with the mission of the airports department. Which is to provide for. Management, operations and development of the city's three airports to our tenants, users and the general public. So that they can have a safe and efficient air transportation system. We're very fortunate in Oklahoma City to have three different classes of civilian airports. We have Will Rogers World Airport, which is the commercial service airport. Wiley Post Airport, which is our corporate business aviation, general aviation reliever airport. And then Clarity Page Airport, which is our smaller general aviation airport. This is the department's organization by line of business with the associated programs under each one. Just want to make a couple of comments under the commercial aviation line of business. We have all of our airfield operations at Will Rogers World Airport. Runways and taxiways and also all the responsibility for safety and security. We have several programs that are under the maintenance section, as you can see. And then one of our larger programs is the property management and development program, which is where the department's engineering. Construction and lease administration is. Before I get into some of the airports performance measures with our leading for results program, I do want to provide. You a brief overview of the Oklahoma City Airport Trust budget and our capital program. In looking at our total revenues, we're anticipating almost 82 million dollars. And I want to talk about some of these categories, particularly for the new council members. Our building rents are comprised of all of the buildings and hangars which are owned by the airport trust. Our landing fee charges are a calculated rate per 1,000 pounds of gross landed weight for our passenger and freight carriers. Our parking revenues are related to our public parking operation for all of the parking garages and surface lots. Concession revenues are for food and beverage, retail and the rental car concessions. And we have revenue from fuel sales, which is either from fuel sales that are either retailed on the airport. Or from those tenants that have self-fueling privileges. We do have customer facility charges, which is the $4.50 per transaction date charge to support the rental car program and the rental car center. We have a over 20 million dollars of other charges, which are various ground rentals, apron fees. And other facility maintenance rentals in association with lease agreements. And passenger facility charges are the $4.50 per ticket. For departure ticket, which supports our capital program. And then each year, we also receive a fair amount of federal and state participation. From the FAA and the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission in the form of grants. We also have carryover, almost 19 million dollars comprised of the project fund, which. Is the previous year's budget dollars that are carried over to fiscal year 22 for our capital program. And we also have the escrow account for the FAA's Mike Monrooney Aeronautical Center. And finally, we have revenue bond proceeds of over 10.4 million. And they, those are bond proceeds that are intended to be used on construction. And primarily, this will be the terminal building as we complete that project for total sources of funds of 111,317,000 dollars. When we balance out the budget, we look at our uses of funds and we have over 14 million dollars of other services and fees. This is comprised of our major contracts to support services in the terminal building and also all over the airport for our passengers. This includes our first transit operation for bus operation between the rental car center and the terminal building. Our aircraft rescue and firefighting contract, janitorial contracts, our parking management contracts and also supplement security. We have other services and fees, 1.2 million dollars. And we have the debt requirements anticipating almost 10 and a half million dollars. And this finances the capital program such as the. Terminal expansion project, the last parking garage and also the rental car center. So total expenses, 46,659,000 dollars. We have reserves of a little over a million dollars. This is funds estimated to be received in fiscal year 22. And this is intended to be used on future capital. And then we have capital outlay of over 63,500,000 dollars. And talking a little bit about our capital program. I want to spend a little bit of time talking about what's happened with the pandemic. In March of 2020, when the pandemic hit, we had time to cut. Over 32 million dollars that we had originally budgeted to do in this particular budget year. And at the time, we also. In the capital, a five-year capital improvement program. We also cut over 40 million dollars and all of that was not knowing how long the effects of the pandemic would be felt by the airports department. So in all, we spent cuts of over 70 million dollars, excuse me, cuts of over 70 million. I always like to show a summary of our ongoing and new projects and I break it out by airport. And you can see that we also carve out Mike Monrooney Aeronautical Center. It is a significant line of business for us at the airport. The FAA leases 1,000 acres on Will Rogers World Airport. And we serve about 30 of the 120 buildings on Mike Monrooney's campus, providing maintenance. We also maintain significant infrastructure such such as roads and parking lots. And numerous other pavements. We maintain the medium voltage electrical distribution system and a median. Medium pressure gas distribution system. And I have a total of four staff which are just dedicated to support Mike Monrooney Aeronautical Center. Some of the major capital programs going forward for this next budget year. We have the runway 1331 reconstruction project. This is a two-phase project, all-in total project cost about 28 million dollars. The first year FY22 project cost is almost 9 million dollars. And it includes the phase one engineering and the construction for phase one. We also have a crosswind runway project at Wiley Post Airport. In fiscal year 22, this is a 2 million dollar project to rehabilitate and reconstruct. The runway also to improve the signage and the lights associated with that particular project. At Clarity Page Airport, we also have a project to reconstruct the terminal apron there. Project cost of one and a half million dollars. And of course, the terminal expansion project, we anticipate winding up and opening up the new space later this summer. Total all in over 80 million dollars. Our fiscal year 22 project cost to finish out this project is almost 14 million dollars. Just to remind you, the goals of this project were to construct four gates, which is the beginning. Just to remind you, the goals of this project were to construct four gates, which is the beginning of an east concourse that will eventually have nine gates. We wanted to also construct a new eight-lane security checkpoint to replace the two checkpoints that we've had for many years. We increased the public circulation space dramatically, which will include two large meter greeter lobbies. And again, hopefully that project will be open sometime in August. And the public, I think, will see Will Rogers World Airport in a completely different light. In looking at this slide, I wanted to just mention a couple of things. It reminds me that with each advancement and discovery in aviation, such as hot air balloons, which were popular in the eighteenth century, comes different ways of increasing safety in aviation. This may be a bit of a different, a strange transition, but there are some things that we learned in this pandemic with regard to trying to keep people safe, that we're going to continue as best practices moving forward. In addition to the regular public address scheduled announcements, we've had signage that's been placed throughout the terminal reminding passenger staff and our tenants to social distance, excuse me, social distance, wash their hands and also wear a mask. One of the main things we did a few months ago was we installed some acrylic panel queue guards that are in the security checkpoint queue. And these provide an additional barrier to the left and right of other passengers as these passengers snake their way to the security checkpoint document checker. We also converted all of our water fountains and bottle filler locations to touchless. And of course, airports participated in the COVID vaccination pods. And we also had a lot of our other airport tenants and responders participate, such as our aircraft rescue and firefighting personnel, all of our bus operators for the rental car bus operation and our public shuttle drivers and parking attendants, as well as our janitorial and all of our concession staff. Basically, anybody that had the susceptibility to be in close proximity to the public. We also took the opportunity in our terminal building to replace all of our HVAC air filters to the recommended MERV thirteen filters, and we will continue to use these filters. They remove fine particulates from the air, such as dust and mold, bacteria, viruses and allergens, and will be a benefit long after COVID. We also will continue our enhanced cleaning from our janitorial staff in public spaces and the TSA checkpoint. And soon we will be installing antimicrobial handrails and UVC modules. Now, the handrails you see there, they're not going to be red. They're for illustrative purposes. But the UVC modules will be under the construction of the escalator there at the bottom that you can see on each side. And we also have pyridium air and surface purifiers that have been purchased and installed in selected places. And these will soon also be installed on all of our public buses. And looking at our performance measures, and when you look at leading for results, it basically, in my view, tells a story. And I think the story in this presentation to you this morning about what's happened this past year has been the effects of the pandemic. And if I were going to title this story, it would, it would be that was then and this is now. When you look at airline service in particular, and really airports and airlines and the travel and hospitality industry was certainly one of the most devastated sectors in the economy as a result of COVID. And I want to take you back in time just a little bit to see how bad we were hurt. In two thousand and eighteen, we had calendar year passenger records for boarding passengers at Will Rogers. And in calendar year two thousand and nineteen, we eclipsed that by ten percent over fourteen, four hundred and fifteen thousand passengers. And in January and February of two thousand and twenty, yet we were even, even higher than the January and February of two thousand and nineteen. However, in two thousand and twenty, when March hit and COVID hit, it was completely devastating where we had sometimes between seven and eight thousand passengers coming through the checkpoint. Our lowest day in April was two hundred and thirty-nine. And for an airport budget that exists on activity and passengers, that was very concerning for us. Our, our issue with air service is that over the past, the growth in population and business activity has certainly increased the demand in air service, and it can affect economic development, tourism and convention business. So we worked very, very hard to recruit air service over these last ten years. And I will tell you that we had hit all of our targeted air service markets. However, there has been some service that has been discontinued. Baltimore, Washington International Airport and Philadelphia International. And I don't know that Philadelphia will ever come back. American had timed Philadelphia's departures, so it would time well with their international departures going to the east. And since international and business has not returned yet to travel like it was in two thousand and nineteen, we may not see that for a while. We do have, excuse me, some airline service that has been suspended indefinitely. And we've had a lot of air service suspended. Some of that has come back, but certainly Detroit, Newark, Washington Dulles Airport and San Francisco. Airlines are still considering this as suspended. In other words, they may come back. They just haven't pulled the trigger on those. We do have some air service that has been reinstated. Very happy to see Ronald Reagan Washington National Airport come back, Los Angeles and Miami. And I think what's important is that American has now announced LaGuardia, which will start on November the second. Now, there's a story with LaGuardia because American had announced LaGuardia at the beginning of two thousand and twenty, but then the pandemic hit and they pulled it. It was supposed to start in June of two thousand and twenty. So I think that bodes well for Oklahoma City and the confidence that American has in Oklahoma City, that they brought LaGuardia back. And then you've recently heard the announcement by Breeze Airways to start services in Oklahoma City, launching Oklahoma City as one of their first launch of cities in the United States. Very happy that Tampa will start on July the first and then New Orleans and San Antonio on July the fifteenth. If you look at our route map today, we still have very good service to the east and west coast. And I hope that we can get some of those services that have been temporarily suspended back in the next year or so. Passenger traffic is doing much better than it has been. If you look at our non-stops today, we'll have twenty-five, which is very close to the twenty-nine non-stops. We had as a high back in two thousand and nineteen. Continuing on with the that was then story. In our administrative program, we like to track the increase in the airport costs to airline boarding passengers. And our target for years has been five percent. This is a very important number to the airlines because it reflects their operating cost at the airport. Of course, when you have a decline in passengers, then that affects this percentage in a big way. We have certain cost centers that go into the numerator, and then you divide that by the total boarding passenger count, and that's how you get your percentage. As traffic starts to come back in twenty-one and fiscal year twenty-two, we believe that this target will rebound closer to the target that we have at five percent. And looking at our property management and development line of business, again, an effect of COVID was the dramatic change in boarding passengers. For several months in this last budget year, we've had an average of fifty-seven percent down from two thousand and nineteen. That is significant. I think what is good, and this is the, this is now part of the story, is when we have just finished the month of May, we had twenty-three of thirty-one days that had a throughput through the checkpoint of over five thousand people. And we've had a few days of over six thousand people. Remember, I said between seven and eight was our high in two thousand and nineteen. So things are definitely picking up, and we're looking for a busy summer to continue. And another barometer of the activity picking up is that we opened up our west canopy lot just west of the terminal building, and it's probably three quarters full. We used to compare our calendar year twenty twenty to calendar year twenty, excuse me, twenty nineteen. And we could see that the changes. I, I, I think another barometer on how well we're doing is if you look at April of two thousand and twenty-one and you throw out two thousand and twenty, and you look at April of nineteen, one of our record years, you can see that we're only thirty-four percent down, still significant, but better than the fifty-seven percent that we've been seeing. Another impact of COVID was we've been tracking the percentage of days in our public parking operation that our capacity exceeds eighty-five percent. And for many years, we had a pressure on our parking facilities and in our garages because given the propensity of severe weather in Oklahoma City, a lot of people like the garage parking. And they also like the canopy lots. In fact, just prior to the pandemic, we were about to pull the trigger on another surface lot with canopies and dedicated shuttle parking, but we had to pull that project because of the pandemic. As you can see, in our FY twenty-one estimated, we have no pressure at all on our parking facilities. And looking at the property management and development line of business, this is our construction program where we try to control the cost and manage our change orders and amendments so that they don't exceed five percent of the original contract amount. We've done a very good job over the years of maintaining that. In fact, our FY twenty-one estimated will actually have eighty-six percent. At Wiley Post Airport, and this is a good news story. Very little effect on general aviation from COVID, certainly in the very beginning. But Wiley Post Airport, and I can't say all general aviation did this, but at Wiley Post, it rebounded pretty good. When you have the percentage of itinerant takeoffs and landings of over seventy percent at a general aviation airport, that's very significant. And you can see over the years, we've been consistent with that. Wiley Post Airport is the largest jet activity airport in the state. We have three hundred and sixty-five airplanes based at Wiley Post. Over eighty of those are jets. There's more jets based at Wiley Post than any other airport in the state. And I think there's more itinerant takeoff and landings. And what that says to me is these are not based aircraft that are taking off and landing. This is commerce happening in Oklahoma City by transit operations. In our maintenance line of business, we also track the hours that our mechanical systems are functioning. These are tenant and passenger comforts. Many of our major mechanical, mechanical systems are old and they're aging. And we are, as you know, the pedestrian tunnel is down, and so we have several renovations with our escalators and elevators temporarily shut down, which is affects our current measure. And also, we had to replace the air handler on the third floor of the terminal building in this, in this terminal expansion project. If you look at our commercial aviation, I want to talk about aircraft diversions. A diversion is basically when, primarily when Dallas-Fort Worth or Love Field get overwhelmed with weather, we often are a divert airport for those air carrier operations. If you look in FY twenty, we typically have a large amount of diversions that we're anticipating, two hundred and seventy-five, and we only had a hundred and seventy-three. And then in FY twenty-one estimated, we also anticipated, although we knew the pandemic was upon us, we anticipated a lower amount of two hundred and twenty-five, but we only had a hundred and twelve. When weather hits DFW, it's not uncommon to see twenty-five or thirty aircraft on the ramp here at Will Rogers waiting for clearance to fly back to DFW. If you look at the cash budget changes that were anticipating in this budget year, we had four hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars as an increase in city provided services. We are adding a construction project manager and deleting an airport construction manager. We're adding a property specialist and deleting the federal program manager. And we are adding a real estate manager to help us in our efforts in trying to recruit more industrial, commercial and retail opportunities in Lariat Landing. The one thousand acres we're developing at Will Rogers World Airport. So our overall FY twenty-two current budget will stand at twenty million, eight hundred and fourteen thousand and twenty-eight dollars. The next slide just shows our cash fund budget as it relates to our major lines of business. Again, the cash fund budget is the department's operating account. And this reflects basically personnel and salaries and benefits of the employees of the airport. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mark Stone Cypher here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure I get this right. You've served as our director for sixteen years and been with our airports for over twenty-four years now?
I had had eight and a half years with the, with the city managing the operations at Will Rogers and then the general aviation airports before I went out to California for a couple of positions and then came back in November of oh five. Yes, sir.
I heard that you may be thinking about retiring. Is that true?
Yeah, I'm surprised Craig didn't mention that. But yes, I, I am going to be retiring on September eighth. My last day will be August twenty-seventh. So it's a.
Yeah, I just want to say, under, under your leadership, the, the transformation that has occurred with our airports is noteworthy. And, and I think it's important to note that under your leadership, we had a major terminal expansion project. We had major changes in parking. We had a modern rental car center built. We had the Lariat Landing development, which is an incredible jewel. And, and I know you're a little leery right now with what's going on post-pandemic. But under your leadership, our air service increased dramatically, especially the direct flights. And we owe you a great debt. What you did in the last sixteen years has been incredible, outstanding work. And I want to personally thank you for it, and I want to wish you the best in your retirement.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Mark, Barbara Young. So just to kind of tag on to Councilman Stone Cypher's comments, you know, to you, to the airport trust and your airport staff, thank you so much for your efforts to protect our citizens, improve and maintain our airports and the dedication to the smart development around that and on airport properties. That's amazing. We want to thank you for your commitment to that five percent on those contract change orders. That's no small feat in the construction world to, to keep that down. So very well done. And thank you for being such a good steward of the citizens' funds that they contribute to that cause. It's no small feat, and we wish you very well in your well-deserved retirement, though we are very sad to see you go.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I thought maybe if I didn't mention the retirement, it might not happen. Apparently that didn't work. That was my strategy. But I really do appreciate Mark's leadership here, and I've enjoyed working with him throughout my career and appreciate all that he's done here. We definitely will miss him, but he's built a great team out there. And I think all the comments that have made, been made, you know, Mark would pass that on to his team too and say, look, they're the ones out there getting the work done. And, and he's got a great team there, and I really appreciate Mark, appreciate his leadership, all that he's done for the city. And we will definitely miss him once he retires. His, his final date, I think it's, is it September eighth? Is that right, Mark?
Yes, that's my retirement date. I will be on leave on the twenty-seventh, but I'll be available till the eighth.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you, Mark. Appreciate all that you do.
Thank you, sir.
Mark, I have a question and a comment. So like many of us, of course, I'm keeping up with, you know, the latest day-to-day conversations that relates to this global pandemic. What are you hearing, if anything, different than I am within the world of, of aviation and travel? What are you hearing in terms of like the sort of psychology of, of the travel? Like you mentioned, there's this increase that, you know, is happening right now. Like, what are you hearing in terms of people's, I don't know, willingness to travel and where, how far, right? What, what are we kind of hearing right now as people are starting to re-acclimate toward, toward travel again?
Councilman, at the beginning of the pandemic, and I would say a few months into it, the industry experts, airline, airport, anybody who has anything to forecast with aviation was saying that really passenger levels would not come back to two thousand and nineteen until two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. What we're seeing is a faster rebound than that. Certainly, the majority of the people traveling today are family and leisure. And we're not seeing business rebound quite as much, and certainly international, which doesn't affect us as much, but yet we have a lot of people that go to connecting hubs that do travel international. International is still down because of the inconsistency with the COVID response in different countries around the world. I can tell you that here in the last couple of months, we've had a lot of days that seem like it's back to normal. And I think that if I could encourage anyone to travel, it is as safe as it possibly can be, in fact, more safe. The terminal building itself, by things that we're doing, make it a safer environment. The airlines are doing a fantastic job of trying to keep everybody safe on the aircraft. And I think the, the, what I'm seeing are very positive signs that Oklahoma City is going to continue to rebound. We're seeing American Airlines add more seats this summer in their schedule than they had in two thousand and nineteen. Now, that's significant coming out of a pandemic. We see a new airline having confidence in Oklahoma City to start a new service. So I think it's important that people try to fly if they want to. Don't be afraid. Don't be afraid to fly, certainly in accordance with the CDC's order and with the Transportation Security Administration directive to airlines and airports. You still have to wear a mask in the terminal building when you're going from the gate to gate to wherever your destination is. But we hope, as as the vaccine has has proved to be beneficial over the country, that at least domestically, maybe that will relax in the next few months. But certainly, the public has a high confidence, and we're seeing a lot of people coming through the terminal building today. And we are very encouraged by the amount of activity, and we want people to fly.
Thank you for walking us through that and the the context and clarification specifically as it relates to the different countries' responses, why that's, you know, lagging us behind here in terms of getting to those 2019 numbers. And then, yeah, that's just very helpful to to consider. And I also suspect that the 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 kind of fluctuations that we're having in terms of conversations around what does business look like now, right? In terms of the last 15, 16 months, well, a lot of a lot of work's taking place virtually now. And I my understanding is a lot of businesses are still trying to figure out what does a return to an office, if at all, even look like. So hearing you describe that's very, very helpful to me, thinking about what it will look like to get us moving again in terms of going to conferences and these sorts of things, right? And then I said that was a question and I have a comment, and it's just echoing Councilwoman Young, Councilman Stone Cypher, which is just to say congratulations on your retirement. What a way to go out during a global but, you know, I think you really stepped stepped up, so I just wanted to say thank you for your service through the years, but definitely through this moment. And please send that to your team as well, because like utilities and public works before you all, I hope you're getting some sort of self care break from just this this horrendous moment, so thank you.
As the other departments have mentioned, it's not just the COVID impact this last year, but certainly airports had to go through the ice storm and all the things with it. And I know I know Eric's very proud of his miles that stretch to Anchorage, but for me as an airport guy, the two most important roads I have are those two 10,000 foot runways that are out here at Will Rogers. They they mean so much economically to the city, and and we need to use the air service that we have, just one more pitch, please, because air service airlines are, they have a lot of decisions to make, and they're being very surgical with their air service right now. If we continue to use the air service, we'll be able to keep it, but thank you. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much, Mark, for everything you do. And definitely been on a 20 year run, and you've been a big part of it there at the airport. So thank you for your service. Okay, that concludes item four. We now have item five, presentation of budget comments, and I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We we did have an open process for allowing multiple different ways that that residents could provide comments on the budget. Doug Dowler, our budget director, is going to give us a summary present. He's going to present a summary categorized. He's categorized these comments in different areas. We are going to make available every comment that was made. We'll make we'll send that out to the council members so that all of you have every comment that was made. We'll also have it posted on OKC.gov, and Doug will walk through that so it can be available to any other residents to be able to look at those as well. So Doug, I'll turn it over to you, let you go through the summary.
All right, thank you, yeah. I'm going to share my screen here and kind of walk through what we received in comments this year for the budget process. The period was a 20 day comment period that was May 4th through May 24th. We received 84 comments from 74 individuals, and 27 were received through email, 55 on the form that was available on OKC.gov. We had a couple of people text in their comments. We did not receive any through the mail this year, but that was also an option. I'm just going to kind of run through how many comments we got in each of the areas. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the comments. As as Craig mentioned, I've just emailed out the full text of all the comments unedited. And and that's also already up on OKC.gov/budget if you want to see those comments. But again, kind of looking at the overall budget, we received eight comments kind of related to different aspects of the overall budget. We received 40 comments related to mental health in various aspects related to mental health. On the police department budget, we received 31 comments across a number of areas. Again, but full comments are attached in the report that's that's available on OKC.gov or emailed to council members. Police and Fire, we had a comment that they generally support the public safety budget. Public Transportation had one comment to eliminate the streetcar. Public Works had a couple of different comments related to Public Works. And we also received a comment on public schools. So again, all the comments are available at OKC.gov/budget. The city clerk will also be attaching to this item on the agenda, the comments, as well as this short summary. And again, I've just emailed those out to mayor and council, and so those are available there. Likewise, what I what I've sent to you is probably kind of small to see here, but this is what the comments look like. We took each comment, we categorized them, that just kind of tried to put them in a general category, the general nature of those comments, included the comment, and then put in parentheses the person's name who submitted it, where that was provided. On a couple of texts, we did not have the names. And so that's just kind of a brief overview. Again, I think you'll take a little bit of time, you'll want to read through those comments and see what folks are saying. Again, we had comments from 74 different individuals submitted on the fiscal year 22 budget during this comment period. So I know that's a very brief summary, but I think it's just going to be easier probably to look through those comments and and kind of take a chance to to kind of absorb what folks had to say. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So first, thank you for that. I cannot wait to dig a bit deeper into those comments. I was also very happy to see just from that snippet there, people expressing support. And from within Ward Two, for what the city manager has set aside for that 1.3 million and that 300,000 for when we don't know what the ultimate shape of the mental health alternative will look like, whether it's the Denver Star program or Kahoots, because we know the consultant and the local residents are still doing their work. And so, but very encouraging to see that. But that's not the thing I really want to say here. There's two things. One, thank you, Doug, and your staff and the city clerk's office for for processing these comments. Seriously, thank you for that. I want to say also thank you to Ward Two resident Elizabeth Sidler for bringing this to my attention. I believe Council Councilman Stone Cypher, you know, he and I worked on the charter update process, and this was something that Elizabeth had brought to us and through municipal council and ultimately Councilman Stone Cypher, we felt that it was something we could put in place through the council process. So I want to say thank you, Mark, for your work a year ago. And I didn't quite understand how important what Elizabeth's recommendation was until last month, when I would just say to every resident, every resident, go look at the state legislature and the amount of time that took place between the releasing of the state budget versus its voting to be adopted and the how much time was given for the public to comment on that budget and and to see that budget. And it is a night and day, and I just want to emphasize this, night and day difference between what the city of Oklahoma City was already doing and now what this 20 day public comment period allows. I I just I did not fully appreciate it until I saw the release of the state budget just with just as quick as possible, and then it's passed. And I did, I I'm serious, y'all, I did not, I already respected the different department heads and the city manager's office and the work our team does, but I have a whole new appreciation for it now. Because, and I just want to really encourage you on social media, people who follow me, to really rethink the this this budget process that we have at the city level. Because the fact that each department, or at least we we have a number of departments presents, actually presents what we are doing. Night and day contrast to what's going on at the other level of government. And I just, I cannot thank each department enough who has presented, even if I don't agree with exactly the numbers and this, that, and the other, the fact that we present it and now the fact that we allow for that 20 day public comment period. I know we can do better. I know we can, I know there will be tweaks, and we will keep learning and growing. I'm not saying this is perfect, but this is good. This is transparent, and I like that. And I just really want to thank, again, everyone who helped to make that 20 day public comment period a reality for us. And I and I just am so appreciative, so so appreciative of that, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. That concludes item five, presentation of budget comments. Now we have item six, citizens to be heard, and we have two who signed up to speak. Ryan Story, is Ryan on the line? Ryan, are you there?
Any star six, Ryan?
Our six, Ryan, if you're having trouble being heard, we cannot currently hear you. Okay, well, the second person is Jess Eddie, is Jess Eddie on the line?
Yeah. Can you guys hear me?
Wait, is that Ryan? Yeah, okay, we'll start with Ryan then. Go ahead, Ryan, you've got three minutes, and if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Yes, absolutely. My name is Ryan Story, I live at 2319 Northwest 43rd Street. I'm in Ward Two, under James Cooper. I just want to say good morning to the mayor, city council members, department heads, my fellow citizens who may be listening today. Unfortunately, I did miss the budget comment email, I wasn't fully aware of it or the time limitations it sent in, so I wanted to address the council today to bring up my bring attention to an issue I'd like to have heard. I wanted to request that additional funding be allocated to implement a web tracking application with the city municipal counselor. As Eric Winger described earlier in his presentation, additional public works are forthcoming. And as we increase the interaction with the general public, I feel that we're going to increase instances and accidents and misunderstandings that necessitate citizens utilize the claims processing to resolve disputes. That's the way the system's currently set up. Currently, in my communication with the city councilor's office, I came to my understanding that each counselor is burdened with over 100 active court claim cases on each of the city councilor's desks. And what that what that describes to me is that each of them is being distracted from the essential duties that they perform for the city, spending too much time, not too much time, but a necessary element of what they do is interact with the citizens to guide them through the claims process or update them on their case status. Currently, we have the Claim Action Center, open records requests, court dockets. Corporation Commission maintains a docket tracking system for all of their activities so that citizens can see where the claims are at or processes in. But the city municipal councilor's office lacks such a system. Without that, I I feel like it's just going to increase the instances, the number of communications that they're going to have to deal with. Understandably, some of these are hostile communications due to misunderstandings that they've had with the city. And it distracts from the crucial crucial service that these councils are going to provide. I I feel that for a minimal cost investment on the city's, you have just a few thousand dollars perhaps, we could implement a web tracking application that would decrease the need for additional staffing in the city municipal councils to deal with public requests. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Okay, now the second person is Jess Eddie. Jess on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Well, first and foremost, the 1.3 million allotted to fund alternative programming to policing is a slap in the face in light of a quarter billion dollars sent to the police department. There's nowhere near enough, and that's not going to placate the community who's demanding institutional and systemic change to the violence that is being perpetrated upon it by the Oklahoma City Police Department. Now, fortunately, George Floyd in America doesn't die every weekend, so the public's involvement and engagement will wane and 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 arise at various times. But as, I want to make it very clear to all of the six conservatives on the city council that history will remember your complicity and your perpetuation of a violent white supremacy. Your party is going to continue to be led by Donald Trump, and you will continue down the path of the cravity and insanity. And that will be your future and and how we will remember you. All of you have lined up, including you, David Holt, with the Republican agenda, the black, the blue, and to fund policing and to ignore the fact that your police departments are desperately killing people. Oklahoma City Police Department is the number two most killing police department in the country. Now, I want you all to turn your eyes to the city of Tulsa and what has been unprecedented for Oklahoma's history and maybe out the nation. The establishment, the billionaires, the white city counselors, the white city mayor all set their lines against the Tulsa black community and lost. They lost. For the first time in Oklahoma City, the people who have been oppressed defeated their oppressors. And it is embarrassing, and Tulsa is being visited with that embarrassment internationally. And that will come to Oklahoma City in a much sooner fashion than any of you seem to appreciate. All you could have, all you had to do was be respectful that there are two divergent opinions and positions in this community and honor each. But 1.3 million is nothing to that extent. You had every opportunity to incorporate the right things along with the wrong things to satisfy the polarized positions in our community, but you showed great deference to the 15% QAnon believers of the GOP who believe that people who get killed by police deserve it. Well, I'll ask you, did the pregnant woman who was killed in the high speed police chase?
All right, that concludes citizens to be heard, and that leaves just a German, item seven. So thank you all, thank you to the city manager for all your work on all of these budget presentations. Thank you to your team. I know you go many months working on this, and and it it sets the priorities for our city, and we're very appreciative. With that, we are adjourned.